Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Before our meeting officially begins, we will have a notification offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
First, I'd ask for a moment of silence in honor and in memory of Ron Urick, who returned from the Sandusky Fire Department after 28 years of service. Father God, we come before your throne of grace this evening, asking and seeking your wisdom and guidance. We thank and praise you for the things that you have done thus far, and we look to you for the wisdom that we need to proceed. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cresser, would you pull the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here. Commissioners, here. Before you, the minutes of our meeting of December 9, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 9 meeting and dispense with formal reading.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Audience participation, anyone wishing to speak to any of the various items of legislation on our regular agenda tonight, please step to the microphone, share with us your name, address, and any thoughts that you may have.
Greetings, all. Mr. President. Tom La Marco, 20648 Street. In reference to the TIF, I'm sorry, not the TIF, let me get my notes in order. The CIC development, development of the CIC, development for Cedar Point and the Cleveland Road TIF. Why is this particular TIF project required to have a CIC established compared to the other TIF areas in Sandusky? Whom and how was the CIC established? Can we get a list of the members of that CIC? And with the forming of the CIC for the project, is the City Commission taken out of the loop for the project details and spending approval? And finally, is the CIC required to provide project and spending details on an open and transparent fashion for the public?
Thank you, La Marco. Anyone else wishing to speak to any of our regular agenda items? If not, then we turn to a particularly joyous occasion. We've made it through another election season, and we are here to swear in a couple, two commissioners who are continuing in office, two colleagues of longstanding now, and two new commissioners we are welcoming to the community and to the, actually not to the community, to the commission. So we will begin with the commissioners who are continuing their service. Mr. Heyberger, do you have an order?
Yes, Your Honor. Oh, yes, Your Honor. Not yet.
That was earlier today.
Yes, Mr. President, and I guess we can go just off of the agenda and start with Commissioner Poole, if you want to. We could probably get up in front here. So, interest?
I'll sign the pictures after.
Raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Charles Wesley Poole, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge.
The duties of my office as a City Commissioner.
The duties of my office as a City Commissioner.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees.
Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
That I am currently extremely qualified to hold the office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter.
In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sometimes it's said, Mr. Poole, that too much humility doesn't go along with being an office holder, so I'm glad you have your sense of humor.
And when we're swearing people in, if you guys have family that won't come home and stay with you, so free day, I won't come home. Raise your right hand. I do state your name, or I state your name, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge.
The duties of my office as a City Commissioner.
The duties of my office as a City Commissioner.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees.
Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter.
In compliance with Sections 4, Section 6, Section 43 of the City Charter.
So help me God.
Mr. Waddington, I think you have taken that oath more times than anyone living at this point in time.
It was my last. One more, one more.
I hope not.
That's the fourth round. You have like two more. No, I'm not doing it.
I'm a kid, Joe. My granddaughter won't do it.
She's so cute.
Yeah.
She is not letting go.
I state your name, do solemnly swear. I, Michael Meinzler, do solemnly swear. That I will support, protect, and defend. That I will support, protect, and defend. The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio. The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio. And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky. And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky. That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge. That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge. The duties of my office as City Commissioner. The duties of my office as City Commissioner. And not be influenced by any consideration. And not be influenced by any consideration. Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees. Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees. That I am currently qualified to hold the office. That I am currently qualified to hold the office. And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office. And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office. In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter. In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter. So help me God.
Well, it's going to be a little confusing when someone at this table says, hey, chief, we've got three chiefs now.
I'll know that part. I can solemnly swear, I will not do that again.
They might still call you chief.
I state your name, do solemnly swear. I, Blake Anthony Harris, do solemnly swear. That I will support, protect, and defend. That I will support, protect, and defend. The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio. The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio. And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky. And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Sandusky. That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge. That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge. The duties of my office as a City Commissioner. The duties of my office as a City Commissioner. And not be influenced by any consideration. And not be influenced by any consideration. Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees. Except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees. That I am currently qualified to hold the office. That I am currently qualified to hold the office. And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office. And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office. In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter. In compliance with Sections 4, 6, and 43 of the City Charter. So help me God. So help me God.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Harris, as well, and we look forward to working with you and Chief Meinzler for many years to come, and we wish you great success. And thank you for running, and thank you for taking the oath today.
Thank you.
You may regret it later.
Super work.
Commissioners, we have several pieces of legislation that have been recommended by staff on someone to care to make a motion to accept those communications.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So, Mrs. Cresser, I guess first I need to ask commissioners, we have a consent agenda, several consent agenda items, there any items that you would like to have placed on the regular agenda? If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is the amended program agreement with the Ohio Historic Preservation Office, that is the second reading. Item B is the second amendment to the agreement with First Transit for the Sandusky Transit System. Item C is a consulting contract with Robert Stadler for the alternate master plans examiner and alternate building official services. Item D is a consulting contract with George Polis as primary alternate plans examiner and backup building official. And item E is the liquor permit transfer for Lon's Winery, doing business as Fireland Winery.
Commissioners, having heard the communication, or the items on the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through E, as drafted and presented to the City Commission, under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflections and ordinances in our resolutions A through E, whether it's in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolution and motion, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Those items are approved. Item number one, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item number one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a two-year agreement with Progressive Cleaning Solutions Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for cleaning services at City Hall, 240 Columbus Avenue, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, is that the current ones that we have now this year?
Mr. Klein?
Do a good job, from what I've seen, good job. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I would just suggest that, in a review in two years, to take a look at how many hours they're really spending, because they're not guaranteed to be here for the two and a half hours every day, but see our cost comparison as to bringing in, like, having our own in-house instead of having a service come in.
Mr. Waddington, you're going to be here in two years, so.
That's your job.
Mr. Poole?
Yes, it'll be your job.
I'm sure you remember that.
I'll remember that, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Mr. Poole.
That brought out a question. How do we clean the other City Hall?
Mr. Klein, are you able to address that?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. President, we use a part-time employee, he's here periodically, he's over there right now, cleaning, you know, five days a week, couple hours a day. It was just too much for him to handle both buildings on the schedule that he's on now.
So, it's two hours a day that we're paying these folks, is that what it was, this contract?
It was for two and a half.
Is there a reason we didn't just hire another employee and do it in-house? Add the hours to the budget, is there a reason? Is it money-wise, or how's it turn out?
Through you, Mr. President, it was solely budgetary. We talked to the union, and it was agreed that there wasn't any way that they could do it for the same price that we could do it if we bid it out through this company.
Okay. Is there anything we can do? We only got one bid, what's the price? Well, it's two years, so let's disregard, it's fine. We're two years out.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Sandusky Community Improvement Corporation as the agency of the City of Sandusky, Ohio, for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research development, and authorizing and confirming a plan for such a development, and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein.
I move the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
There, I guess there's a lot of question or concern as to the formation of the CIC and then the distribution of the bonds. I don't know if one of the staff members could explain, you know, the nature of the CIC, and in it, I'm using the abbreviations for it, but they can get further depth of that, but understanding what it is today and what it will be going down the road.
Yes, Mr. Lasco, this is something new for us, so if you could address, there were some other questions that other commissioners have had before today and audience members, so I will turn it over to you for a little while to explain all that.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President, Commissioner Lockhart, and I'll also suggest if the law director wants to weigh in as well, I'll certainly defer to him at points. But I do appreciate the opportunity to talk, we have had a lot of questions that have come in since the agenda was out. But this is a related piece of legislation to the project funding agreement that the city has considered at the last two commission meetings and approved. But the 2.25 million in bonds that the city will be issuing to Cedar Point for the Sports Center project are a very specific type of bond, it's known as a Chapter 165 bond or an industrial development bond. And that specific bond requires, per ORC, there to exist a community improvement corporation, which did not exist in years past. So there is now a CIC that has been formed, it's an entity that's separate, legally speaking, from the City of Sandusky. But the CIC, to be able to, for the bonds to be issued, there must be a CIC, but then the CIC must also enter into an economic development plan with the municipality, in this instance, the City of Sandusky. And secondarily, that plan must designate the CIC as an instrument of the city in the promotion of economic development. So the legislation in front of commission this evening is the adoption of both a broad economic development plan, but also designating the Sandusky Community Improvement Corporation as the CIC, an instrument of the city in the promotion of economic development. To answer a few questions that were asked, both here on the floor and also in email, I think specifically, why is a CIC required now when the city has issued bonds in the past and not needed a CIC? It's really the nature of whom the bond proceeds are being sold to. In this instance, the city is selling bond proceeds to a private entity, that being, they're going to advance the interests of a private entity, which is Cedar Fair and the Sports Center Project, and they're going to benefit a private entity, albeit it will also benefit the public as well. So it's really who's going to be the recipient of the project that those bonds are being sold for to finance, that being Cedar Fair. So that's the trigger for why a CIC needs to be created, which has since been created, and why they're going to be under the Chapter 165 bond structure. The members of the CIC as currently constituted are myself, the city manager, the acting finance director, Commissioner Twine, and Al Nichols. The CIC was formed by the city's bond council, Squire Catherine Tompkins, to be specifically, to be specific, and then I believe there was a question about sort of transparency of the CIC. Moving forward, all meetings of the CIC must be advertised and open to the public, and then all meeting minutes, there must be meeting minutes, and those meeting minutes must be made available to the public. I do want to note as well that there will be two somewhat related pieces of legislation that will come to this commission in 2020. One will be the actual issuance of the bonds and who those are being sold to. Secondarily, the CIC has to specifically consider and approve and recommend those bonds being sold and to the benefit of the Cedar Fair Sports Center Project. So I expect those two pieces of legislation to come to this commission sometime in January. I know that is a lot of information, I don't know if the law director would want to weigh in, but I'm happy to field additional questions.
Heyberger.
Mr. Lasco handled it perfectly. The only thing I would like to add is that the CIC in this first, in this part, was just a check the box for the bonds. There's not, this money's not going to be flowing through the CIC, it's not going to the CIC, it's just a matter of, do we have a CIC and did they approve the project? Check the box, yes, and then we can move forward getting these bonds.
And as I understand it, Mr. Heyberger, Mr. Lasco, maybe you could confirm this, but the type of bonds that we're selling are such that it's a, this is a creature, the CIC is a creature of state law, and state law requires that this be created in the way that we're creating it so that we can sell these bonds.
Through you, Commissioner President, that's correct, and in talking with our bond council, there has been a lot of pressure to put on the state to eliminate this check the box, because it seems needless, and, but as of now, it hasn't been removed, so this is the step we got to go.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman. Just a, just a quick follow-up, the one portion about the board, the formation of the board of the CIC, you know, when it was created and what it'll do here down the road? That's my question.
When was it created?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know who was going to answer.
When was it created and what will it do, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Through you, Mr. President, Commissioner Lockhart, I believe the actual articles of incorporation were created and filed sometime in mid-November, but the actual election of officers occurred earlier this week, and then there is a resolution that was passed to validate those board members, and then it's from there that the next step would be the adoption of this plan, and then the designation of the CIC as the entity to, and the law director sends check the box to be able to issue these bonds.
And so ultimately, this is all created to further the best interest of the, of the project and to the city and into the partners that we have with the city?
Yes, Commissioner, and it's not identical, but I sort of go back a couple years to when the Energy Special Improvement District had to be created and validated by this commission. That's an instance where there's private projects that are seeking private financing. The city has no involvement from a funding standpoint, a tax abatement standpoint, but those projects had to come in front of this commission to, in essence, be approved and for us to levy the assessments. So it's not identical, but it's somewhat similar to when we created the Special Improvement District.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
What was the reason or advantage, disadvantage to choosing this type of bond?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole, I don't know that there's advantages or disadvantages per se, it's merely required by virtue of the fact that the bonds are being sold to finance improvements to a private property that benefit the private property, that being the Sports Center Project. Had the city been issuing bonds to, for example, construct the Sandusky Bay pathway, the CIC would not be required, nor would they be required to weigh in. It is merely the fact that the bonds that the city looks to issue will benefit a private entity and be provided to the private entity.
I understand that, doesn't, are you saying then that that was the only choice you had for, in order for Cedar Point to have this project? This is the only kind of way it could be financed, is that what you're saying?
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole, bluntly, yes. Through the issuance of bonds, which will be backstopped by the project funding agreement, this is the only vehicle that we can finance those through, and there must be a CIC involved in the transaction.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, and they're paid how, paid back how, the bonds?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole, the project funding agreement that this commission passed the last two meetings, if you'll remember, it set a minimum payment to the city of 550,000, payable in two installments a year of 275,000. So once the city disperses the 2.25 million to Cedar Fair, those will be paid back to the city by virtue of those semi-annual project funding agreement payments. So that's how that'll work.
This is what happens when you send legislation on Wednesday, and I have to figure it out by Friday. So I, I'm still not certain exactly, I understand why you have to do it, that's fine, that's what the law says. I do have, why don't you talk about the portion that says, may incur debt, mortgage its property, is it mortgage its own property, make loans, sell property, what property are we talking about? This represent the entire city, or just, go ahead.
Lasco.
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole, I would say a CIC is a nonprofit corporation, albeit it's not a tax-exempt nonprofit corporation, but like any corporation or entity, it can buy real estate, it can provide mortgages, it can provide loans. Candidly, it's an entity that has no money, the city's not on the hook to fund the corporation, but it does have almost any and all rights that any entity could have. Candidly, I'd be surprised if we ever have to use this vehicle again. I won't say that we never will, but it's really just an instance of the project that we're funding through the project funding agreement brought forth to this commission. But there are rights that are provided to the corporation just as any legal entity.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, and this is a note, commissioners and the public, these are often items that we put on the consent agenda, it does cause some angst when we put these on the consent agenda, they're pretty darn routine, we, the last meeting of the year, we're always getting to these, but I thought it was better to just leave them on the regular agenda so we had fewer questions. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number three then, please?
Yes, this is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Four to Ordinance 19-054, passed by the City Commission on March 25, 2019, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2019, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Martin, these are the corporations that we make adjustments to the budget, if I recall correctly, that catch us up, if you will, with all the different legislation and expenditures that the commission has voted on since we last updated the budget.
Correct, correct. It's kind of the cleanup for year end so that we can start a whole new fresh year all over again, so it's adding a little bit if we need to, taking down because projects aren't as far in progress, that type of thing, so just a little cleanup item, and then we start fresh with a temporary budget and then the full budget back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments on item three?
in progress, that type of thing. So just a little cleanup item and then we start fresh with a temporary budget and then the full budget back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments on item three?
One question, Mr. Chairman, not about specifically, that format by which we do that, is that the only way, the only way we can finance things? And the reason, yeah, for the end of the year? No, this here, this adding this at the end of the year, it's, it's something that we've always done, but the concept of not really understanding, are we in good shape, bad shape? You just add money?
Sure.
Okay. Is this the only way this can be, is this the only way we can finance ourselves?
A budget amendment. We have to, we set up the budget thinking it's going to be one way at the beginning of the year. If, as it turns out, like with a big project, you don't know how much you're going to spend for the year, so it's all out there. So we take it back if it hasn't all been spent, that type of thing. And then you reallocate it at the beginning of the year, again, through your temporary budget and your regular budget. So it's just kind of a routine, kind of cleaning up. Some items may have been a little bit more, that type of thing, so we have to add a little something. You'll see some of them are positive, some of them majorly are negative though, to bring it back down to what was budgeted and spent and that type of thing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have, dealing with major projects, I understand that, and I will get into this with you over the next year. Much of this, I don't understand, don't necessarily think that, it's not an easier way to understand this, dealing with individual departments. We seem to be adding all kinds of money at the end of the year to a budget that seems to me we should have known what it was going to be and they should have stayed by it. And perhaps I just misunderstand it, but I'll get with you later. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
To be, to be clear, this is not adding or subtracting money, this is simply a, an accounting of the money. This represents, for instance, changes in a, in a, in a project if we had a deduct. If we had an add, this commission, there's nothing in this legislation, this commission has not approved or voted. So it's, it is inappropriate, I think, to characterize it as, as adding money, you know, here and there subtracting money. It is an accounting of the money that throughout the year, we have voted on and we've passed by this commission, whether they're adds or they're deductions. And it's just simply a way of catching up with, with the numbers and compiling them, putting them all together. Is that not the case?
Yes, that's correct. Got to be true.
Yeah, there, I have a, I have an accounting friend who says there's accounting and then there's government accounting and fund accounting, and it's just something, instead of fund accounting, sometimes he calls it funny accounting because it's just odd. But that's, that's a function of how the accounting world works and this is what we need to do to clean up the books at the year end. Private corporation wouldn't go through this, but we, as a, as a public entity do. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the, call the role on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance making temporary appropriations for the months of January, February and March 2020 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd, she's staying longer.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Martin, could you walk us through this also, please?
This is basically just to let us do business for the first few months before Eric finalizes the budget. Gives us about a quarter's worth of what we're guessing maybe the budget is, just to do, pay electric bills, keep the gas on, that kind of thing. So it's just, as it is, a temporary budget just to get us through.
There's something a little bit odd about our charter that doesn't allow, did not allow us to adopt a budget until after we already start the new year. Some cities aren't that way, but that's how our charter is and that's the rule that we have to follow.
Right, correct.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Also, beyond this first three months, we got an extra payroll in next year's budget. We have to count for.
We do. Anything else, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Sorry.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Payroll Stabilization Fund and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Whoopsir, Ms. Martin, I'm not sure who wants to address this one. The city has long had a payroll stabilization fund. We've been able to add some funding to it in recent years because the budget has been strong. We, we know that there are employees of long tenure who have some accumulated time and are entitled to some compensation when they, when they leave us. And we created this fund quite a number of years ago. In the bad years, it was down to zero, but it allows us to be able to accommodate those obligations without impacting the city's general fund. And I know that, I think it's in 2020, we, is it 2020, we, we have an extra payroll period and rather than throw our budget off, we've added money for that. But I mean, I know that background, but is there anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Whoopsir? Ms. Martin, anything?
Go ahead. I'll, I'll start, but through the Commission President, Commissioner Murray and the rest of the commission, and Sally, please jump in. I mean, Commission President, you described it really well. This fund was set up smartly several years ago as, as times became more financially difficult. It was depleted. As we've been able to stabilize revenues over the last several years, we've, we've built it up quite a bit, to the point where at one point this year, it was nearly at $800,000, I believe, before making the transfer to take it down. We're recommending a transfer of an additional $400,000 next year primarily to cover that 27th payroll and ultimately will still keep enough in the fund to satisfy the, what we assume will be the obligations of it over the next at least three to five years. Sally, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, we should have enough to cut. We'll be over, slightly over a million dollars when we make that transfer, if you approve it. And then our payroll averages anywhere from $650,000 to $700,000. So that still leaves you $300,000. This year's termination payouts were approximately 160. So we still have, if everything happens again the same next year, we should be good and still have a little something left over for the following year. And then we can continue to fund it, again, like we always budget, a certain amount and then if things are good, we go a little bit higher. And that's kind of a reference to one of the amendments that need to be made at year end. We had budgeted for $50,000, we were doing slightly better, so we moved it to the $400,000 so that we could subsidize that. So that's something we don't technically know until the very end of the year. So that would be an example of one of those type of amendments.
So how often, I should be able to figure this out, I'm sitting here and I can't figure it out. How often do we have an extra payroll period?
Every 11 years, I think Kate said.
I think so.
Every 11 years?
I think so.
Okay. And I, I know a lot of companies and, and governments have gone to, instead of having bi-weekly payroll, which is what causes this issue, they've gone to twice monthly payroll. Any particular reason we don't do that? So that we avoid this meteor that hits us once every 11 years?
I'm not sure.
Through, through the Commission President, the commission, we can certainly take a look at that, once the new finance director is in place with the finance committee.
It'll be a good time to look at it after we've, you know, bitten the bullet for 2020 so that this doesn't randomly hit somebody 11 years from now. Another commission, I should say. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Before we turn to Mr. Whoopsir's manager's report, I did want to mention, while we still have a lot of guests here who can maybe take note of the, of the spiffy, polished up, repainted boy with a boot out in the alley, there was a little article in the paper and, a little article, it was a big article in the paper. Very appreciative of that. I want to express our thanks for the folks who were involved in making that happen. The base of the, of the boy with a boot also contains a time capsule from our 2018 bicentennial celebration. I think it's set to be open 50 years from now. And I know Mr. Brady is still hoping to be on the commission at that point in time. He says, he says he's going to be, he said he's going to be present when it's open, but only if we reopen and put his ashes in there, so. I, I don't think he'll be here. I don't think I'll be here either.
Merry Christmas.
But the capsule, the time capsule was built and donated to the city by Janata and Herter, and Ted Castor has been instrumental in making sure that that happened, and we thank Janata and Herter and, and Mr. Castor for that. The items within the time capsule were collected, sealed and placed in there by Mackenzie Spriggs, who is here and who coordinated our year-long celebration of our bicentennial. And I'm told that if you want to find out what's in there, you're going to have to pry it from Mackenzie because I don't know that anyone else really knows. The, and Todd Gibson, Todd Gibson, our facilities and properties supervisor, donated a lot of his time and certainly his talent to build a new wooden base which housed the time capsule in which the boy with the boot sits on. So we are very thankful for all of those who participated in creating that. It's good to have the boy with the boot back where it belongs. That's the original that we have here, it's actually a replica that's in the park, and we're appreciative for all who were involved, so.
That's great.
Thank you for that. Mr. Whoopsir, your report?
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioner, audience and staff.
Need a motion to accept the donation.
Accept the donation?
Yes.
We need a motion to accept the donation of the time for the boy with the boot.
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. With our thanks.
And then one additional donation, the city of Sandusky Recreation Department received a donation of 15 cases of Gatorade from Northern Hastrop Food Service for use in the department's upcoming winter break camp at Sandusky High School. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Right. And then before I get started in the report, I just want to do say thank you to Commissioner Lloyd and Commissioner Lockhart for your, for years of service. It has been great to work with you, and I know you're both very passionate and will continue to be passionate about Sandusky, and also to welcome Commissioners Meinzler and Harris. I look forward to working with you in the new year. With that, we'll turn to new and old business administration, I'll start with. We do have two personnel announcements to make today. One requesting an additional motion from the City Commission. The first is that Chief John Orzak, who has been serving in addition to his role as Chief of Police for the last almost two years, has been the Safety Service Director, providing oversight to both the police departments and the fire departments, and fire department. And we've worked closely with John as he looks at what the next steps would be for his career and ultimately what the needs of the city are with the amount of growth and projects that we've taken on over the last few years and then John being ready to make a transition. So I wanted to let the City Commission know that effective in January, John's title of Acting Safety Service Director will transition to Assistant City Manager. He will continue to serve as Police Chief during that time, but we will come back to the newly seated commission in January and ask you to put together a search committee to ultimately select at some point next year, a new Chief of Police. And at that time, John would transition out of his role as Chief of Police and then full time into the role of Assistant City Manager. In his new role, starting in January, as Assistant City Manager, he will continue to provide oversight of the police and fire departments, but will also take on an expanded role with special projects, one of the big ones being working closely with Public Works and the municipal court on the creation of the new police station and justice center. So that way, the new Police Chief will be able to focus on the role of on the job and not have to also really be the liaison to that project, as well as many, many other duties that John has undertaken. And as we looked at, you know, both the potential opportunities for John, as he determined to transition out of the Chief of Police role, but also the needs of the city, it became natural that he had the respect of so many people within the city already and worked interdepartmentally, and we really wanted to keep him on staff. And so we think this is a good fit. You know, we're doing more than we have in a long time in the city of Sandusky, but that keeps everyone very busy. And I think having this position filled will allow us to be even more productive. So again, this will be in next year's budget to make it official. Ultimately, the commission can vote on it at that time, but I wanted to let everyone know that we're going to move him into our office in the beginning of next year. And ultimately, are really excited to have him in that role. And then we have the chance to be really deliberate in filling the very large shoes that he has created as, as the Chief of Police. So with that.
I'm so glad that you're taking that, that step, and I'm so grateful that we're able to continue to, Chief Orzak advised the city and served the city. Makes you really great. I just want to say my quick question.
I talked to John before the meeting, very good choice. I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I've worked closely with John over the past, since I've been on commission, City Commission, and even prior to being on City Commission, and I think it is a great choice. John is very level-headed, he doesn't lose his temper easily. He, he's a great person, he's, he's established relationships among the community, especially among the law enforcement community. So I'm looking forward to this next chapter in his life and looking forward to working, again, closely with you over the next few years.
Did you want to say anything, Chief? I'm sorry.
Mr. Brady.
Chief Orzak has found, found a way to develop community policing throughout our city, and that's allowed our city to gain the respect of our residents, our police to gain the respect of our residents, and our residents to gain the respect of our police. And while doing all that, he's certainly gained the respect of the other 246 employees in the city. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a combination for success in anything that he does. Thanks for taking a chance on us.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Could I entertain a motion to put Mr. Orzak in? Vote on it tonight. I think as a Commission, from what I'm hearing, we don't need to wait till January if that's okay with the City Manager. I'd be supportive of that.
Is that a motion, Mr. Waddington?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
John would do very well at that, at whatever position that we give him, and he's done a fine job for us as Police Chief. We have several other, at least one other position that I noted in looking on the budget that they're planning to fill. I'd appreciate having some job description and/or discussion about whether or not we even need these positions, just because it's just good business to do that. It's, I'm sure you're able to justify it, but for us to just point, because we love John and he does a great work, making up, creating another position that the taxpayers have to pay for, they are entitled to, that we've done some sort of due diligence to indicate that it was necessary and not just frivolous. Okay. Not that I doubt that he can do that, but I think we should view it and just include it with the budget material, because there are other positions that you have on that that have been requested. Just my thoughts on it.
I heard Mr. Whoopsir to sketch out a job description, and I'm quite confident there will be a written job description because that's required. Anything to add to the concerns of Mr. Whoops, that Mr. Poole raised?
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole and the other commissioners, that is something we've taken very seriously. We do have a draft job description that we can circulate already. As to the budget, we have, this was something that we had in mind about potentially transitioning to when we created the Safety, Acting Safety Service Director position going into 2018. And so we were thoughtful upon the retirement of Phil Frost as the Assistant Police Chief. And then there has been approved by the Commission an Assistant Fire Chief for the last two years in the budget, ultimately that by not filling those positions and taking advantage, at least for the time being, of Chief Orzak's expertise in those areas, so he can work with Chief Wilcox and the selected Fire Chief, or the selected Police Chief, that we can actually keep this budget neutral from the savings we've achieved there. So there will not be an impact, and obviously, the new Police Chief will not be selected until later in 2020. And then finally, I would just say that Chief Orzak is not going to be taking any additional compensation or benefits. His contract will stay the same. So that being said, we're certainly willing to work at the pace that the Commission is comfortable, but this will ultimately be budget neutral for the year, and we have already, you know, kind of taken steps to fill out that job description, but we're happy to work with whatever the Commission is comfortable with.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I know you've been thinking about this for a long time, and from a structure standpoint, it makes sense, and I really feel that it'll make everything stronger and flow a lot better. And I think that Chief Orzak is the absolute best person for the job, so I'm definitely willing to support the motion.
Additional considerations or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
Other than how several individuals feel about this, there's been nothing presented to this Commission at all that justifies doing this, and I'm not opposed to it at all. I have a problem with doing things like, this was obviously, appears to have been decided someplace else, because at no point in time has there been anything presented to this Commission or to the public to suggest that we needed this job, needed this position. And I'm not even fighting against it. I think it's inappropriate that we get a couple of comments from folks that are just willing to vote for it after we talk about what a great person this gentleman is, and then suddenly we have a position. All of the things that you said are possibly true. I can't remember them all. If we're going to do a budget, the budget should have, it should be written out, justifications. In fact, we have been very, very generous over the last three years in allowing you to just put people on without Commission taking any, making any comment whatsoever about whether or not they're justified or not. We've not gone back and seen whether or not we got any work out of, what the work was or measured the, its impact on the community. We've simply been spending money, and I just, that is my only concern about this. It's not the good way to do business. Couple Commissioners says he's a nice guy, and you want him to do something. I'm not sure what it is. I did hear what you said, but that's not, that's not, that's not a good way to do business. And so I'm just going to vote no on this for that very reason. We've done just enough talky-talk and then just go, okay. I think that's without, if it's, we need to do this professionally like we're actually a business that's concerned about the taxpayers' money and have something on paper justification and some talk about it ahead of time. So, thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Lockhart.
I guess the procedurally is, my question would be, is this something that we'd have to put out for public bid in case somebody else said, hey, you know, I'm just as qualified to be a, in any of these roles? And in regard to the City Service Safety Director, are you now making a replacement for the Safety Services Director, or are you eliminating that position? Where are we going with that?
Ms. Whoopsir.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Lockhart, the role of Safety Service Director was always an Acting Safety Service Director. That was actually a position that we had not had in the city previously. So that position would go away, and then Chief Orzak would assume the duties of that position, as well as the other duties with the time capacity that he would have when he is no longer serving as the day-to-day Chief of Police. And I would, I would just say to that, you know, generally speaking, positions within the approved budget are generally the prerogative of the City Manager, is the way the charter is set up and structured, although every year I always do define in the budget exactly what new positions we intend to fill before the Commission votes in the budget so that we're not sneaking new full-time positions in without having the opportunity to ask if they're necessary or not. Commissioner Poole, certainly we can come back and talk about the positions that have been created over the last few years and what roles those are playing, but I would say that's partially why I'm coming to you now and not at the time of the budget, is because we want to make that transition earlier. But this is not something that we would necessarily try to sneak through. We've always, you know, we've never filled a new position that was a created position that didn't come to the Commission first, because ultimately, you do approve the budget, and so I want you to know what positions are in there, because those, unlike a one-time project, do become a long-term cost to the city. So this will be in the budget, and certainly you can vote at that time. But ultimately, I always do put new positions into that budget with a paragraph description as to why it was justified or we intend to go forward with it.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you call the role on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
No.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
A motion passes. Mr. Whoopsir.
Thank you. We have other exciting personnel news tonight. As you know, we've had a vacancy in the Finance Department since Director Soloway chose to transition to other opportunities. Sally, first of all, I want to say has done an incredible job filling in under difficult circumstances, and we're very grateful for her time. We have been conducting a search. Applications were due on November 30th. We had 32 applicants for the position. Myself, Sally, Director Hayberger, and Connie Nicholson from our Administrative Services Department conducted interviews with the finalists for that position. We all unanimously selected Michelle Reader, who is currently the acting, or is currently the Finance Director of the City of Norwalk, and came highly recommended in addition to have a strong recommendations, strong interviews, and a strong resume. We introduced her to the leadership of the Finance Committee as well, and they also were strongly supportive of her as a candidate. So we have made a conditional offer to her to serve as the next Finance Director of the city, her and her husband do keep a second home in the city and spend a lot of time here. And, you know, so we would like her to be able to start as soon as possible, and so we'd ask for a motion to approve that hiring of Michelle as the new Finance Director of the city to start in early January.
So move.
Second. There's been a motion and second, and just to put some context in that, a few years ago, we changed the charter so that the Finance Director and the Law Director would direct reports to the City Manager, and I think that's worked out very well. But the charter also requires that when the City Manager seeks to hire a new Law Director or Finance Director, it has to be with the consent of the Commission. So that's the motion that's on the table. Additional questions, I mean, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
To the City Manager, I looked through all the information that you sent out, and I was excited to see we have someone that is already supporting Sandusky and qualified and local that will be here. So I think it's a good choice, and I'm really looking forward to meeting her.
Likewise.
And her joining me.
You know, I think a long years of government experience, we were talking a little bit before about fund accounting, is really important, and I'm sure that with the experience that she has, that she'll be able to hit the ground running and be able to make great contributions. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
That motion is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Police. Officers Michaela Cook and Mason Die both completed the 40-hour course for crisis intervention training. CIT programs across the country help direct persons with mental illness into treatment instead of inappropriate incarceration. The 40-hour training provides practical techniques for de-escalating crises. Officers learn to integrate their police training with some different approaches to a person they believe to have a mental disorder. Role-playing is utilized to make the experience as close to reality as possible, so we commend them on that training. Also, for Fire, firefighters will be assisting OGO by helping distribute Christmas trees and gifts. On Christmas Eve, the Sandusky Fire Department Station 1 on Marcus Street will turn into Santa's workshop. The station will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to put toys together, drop off your items and have them assembled, pick up as by midnight, Christmas Eve. If there are any questions, call Diane at 419-627-5822. Also, Finance, and I'm actually thinking as I read that, that I could utilize that service, hopefully to see some of my children's gifts. For Finance, both the Administrative Benefit Review Committee and the Finance Committee have recommended a two-tier system for the cost-of-living adjustments for non-bargaining employees effective for the first pay period of 2019. Any non-bargaining employee that has a base annual salary under $70,000 would receive 3% increase, and anyone over $70,000 would receive a 2% increase. The next step is to have the City Commission approve this recommendation. So I'd ask for a motion to accept that recommendation.
So move.
Second.
A motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, a general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter, we highly recommend that you contact the Water Department to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs for the owner. The customer accounting office number is 419-627-5893. Again, that's 419-627-5893. Moving on to Public Works, we want to congratulate the following staff for promotions. Ed Dayringer was promoted to Chief Construction Inspector in Engineering. Connor Lente was promoted to Shift 1 Operator at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Al Percival was promoted to Lab Technician 2 at Big Island Waterworks. Also, we'd like to welcome the two new staff members, Justina McCutcheon, who I had a chance to meet today, who's an Operator 2 at Big Island, and Justin McKillop, who I also had a chance to meet this week as a Maintenance 2 in Forestry. The contractors on the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive will secure their construction sites starting today and will return in 2020, with all the construction continuing over the next few weeks. Please remember to take extreme caution and pay attention to all signs as you travel the city to celebrate the holidays. The Forestry Division will be performing Christmas tree collection throughout the city during the week of January 6, and will distribute further details through our website, the press, and social media. Residents may also drop off trees from January 4th to 12th at two locations, the Shelby Street Boat Launch, Overflow Parking Lot, or the Kiwanis Park Parking Lot. For questions regarding Christmas tree collection, please call 419-627-5884. Also, the Streets and Traffic crews have made two rounds through each zone for the leaf collection program. They will drive through the city checking for additional leaves during the final weeks in December. And additionally, we're extending the drop-off period for those who have not met the schedule. Residents are welcome to drop off leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the City Service Center seven days a week through January. Moving on to Community Development and Planning, Economic Development Incentive Committee will meet Tuesday, January 14 at 1:30 p.m. in the City Commission chambers. The Planning Department will meet Wednesday, January 22 at 4:30 p.m. in the Commission chambers. BZA will meet Thursday, January 16 in the Commission chambers. I don't have a time for that one. Do we know? Matt? Is that generally 4:30? Okay. And then the regular Landmarks Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 15 at 4:00 p.m. in the Commission chambers. And then the Arts and Culture Commission will meet Tuesday, January 21 at 5:15 p.m. in the Commission chambers. And then finally, with Recreation, the City of Sandusky Recreation Department is proud to announce the winners in the 2019 Rundusky Race Series Grand Prize Package. Kathy Capitis and Kirk Cresser, both of Sandusky, each won entry to all seven 2019 participating races in 2020, a $50 gift card to the North Shore Running Store in downtown Sandusky, and entry to one of the Rite Aid Cleveland Marathon races in May. The Rundusky Race Series had over 80 participants who ran at least five of the seven races and qualified for a free hooded sweatshirt provided by Fire and Regional Medical Center. Over 50 participants ran six or more of the races to qualify for the race package drawing, and 10 of those ran all seven of the race series. The race series resulted in over 400 registrations to Sandusky races with an average of 58 participants per race, and the average age per participant was 44 and a half years old. The series will be back with two additional races in 2020, so thank you, Jason and your team, for that, for one more innovative recreation event, or several of those in the city. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments for the City Manager? Hats off to the Streets and Traffic crews, Mr. Klein. Normally, by this time, there would have been some, at least hiccups that came to the Commission's attention. I don't think I heard of one. I think it went as smooth as could be. I know we've invested in some additional equipment, and we do have some more people to do the work these days, but it's very much appreciated, and I thought it should be recognized here. Additional questions or comments? Any items of old business, Commissioners? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I regret to inform you that I have to ask for a motion for an executive session for personnel.
Compensation of personnel.
Compensation of personnel, City Manager. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, a general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter, we highly recommend that you contact the Water Department to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs for the owner. The customer accounting office number is 419-627-5893. Again, that's 419-627-5893. Moving on to Public Works, we want to congratulate the following staff for promotions. Ed Dayringer was promoted to Chief Construction Inspector in Engineering. Connor Lente was promoted to Shift 1 Operator at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Al Percival was promoted to Lab Technician 2 at Big Island Waterworks. Also, we'd like to welcome the two new staff members, Justina McCutcheon, who I had a chance to meet today, who's an Operator 2 at Big Island, and Justin McKillop, who I also had a chance to meet this week, as a Maintenance 2 in Forestry. The contractors on the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive will secure their construction sites starting today and will return in 2020, with all the construction continuing over the next few weeks. Please remember to take extreme caution and pay attention to all signs as you travel the city to celebrate the holidays. The Forestry Division will be performing Christmas tree collection throughout the city during the week of January 6, and will distribute further details through our website, the press, and social media. Residents may also drop off trees from January 4th to 12th at two locations, the Shelby Street Boat Launch, Overflow Parking Lot, or the Kiwanis Park Parking Lot. For questions regarding Christmas tree collection, please call 419-627-5884. Also, the Streets and Traffic crews have made two rounds through each zone for the leaf collection program. They will drive through the city checking for additional leaves during the final weeks in December. And additionally, we're extending the drop-off period for those who have not met the schedule. Residents are welcome to drop off leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the City Service Center seven days a week through January. Moving on to Community Development and Planning, Economic Development Incentive Committee will meet Tuesday, January 14 at 1:30 p.m. in the City Commission chambers. The Planning Department will meet Wednesday, January 22 at 4:30 p.m. in the Commission chambers. BZA will meet Thursday, January 16 in the Commission chambers. I don't have a time for that one. Do we know? Matt? Is that generally 4:30? Okay. And then the regular Landmarks Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 15 at 4:00 p.m. in the Commission chambers. And then the Arts and Culture Commission will meet Tuesday, January 21 at 5:15 p.m. in the Commission chambers. And then finally, with Recreation, the City of Sandusky Recreation Department is proud to announce the winners in the 2019 Rundusky Race Series Grand Prize Package. Kathy Capitis and Kirk Cresser, both of Sandusky, each won entry to all seven 2019 participating races in 2020, a $50 gift card to the North Shore Running Store in downtown Sandusky, and entry to one of the Rite Aid Cleveland Marathon races in May. The Rundusky Race Series had over 80 participants who ran at least five of the seven races and qualified for a free hooded sweatshirt provided by Fire and Regional Medical Center. Over 50 participants ran six or more of the races to qualify for the race package drawing, and 10 of those ran all seven of the race series. The race series resulted in over 400 registrations to Sandusky races with an average of 58 participants per race, and the average age per participant was 44 and a half years old. The series will be back with two additional races in 2020, so thank you, Jason and your team, for that, for one more innovative recreation event, or several of those in the city. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. at the tip of it is Dan McGookie's bait house, and then he owns, I believe, the next two or three parcels going west on Washington. So he has asked that that be included in the overlay district.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Additional items of new business? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone present wishing to address the Commission, please step to the microphone, give us your name, address, and share with us any thoughts that you might have.
President of the Commission, John Adams, and I am the Chaplain for the Sandusky Police Department, other police departments, and as well, I have worked extremely closely with Chief Orzak in many different areas. It was one of the things that I did that I've never done before. When you were searching for a Police Chief, I sent a letter in saying that I knew his character, and one of the things I recognized about him was two things, his love for the City of Sandusky and his love for the people he worked with and worked under him. Obviously, it's going to be a change in him not being in the chief position anymore. We've all benefited from that very well, this community has as well. And however, things change, but I just want to say how much I appreciate your support of what he has done, and he certainly has made a difference in the city, and I applaud that. And as someone who's worked very closely with him, I appreciate all that he's done. And he has run his race with honor. Not everybody gets to do that. Not everybody gets to dismount on their terms, and he's able to do that and has done that with extreme integrity and extreme honor. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that and how much we appreciate you, Chief Orzak. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for being here, Chaplain. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? Then we will take a recess unless you had something to say.
Just a minute.
Please.
Okay. So, with this being my last meeting, I just wanted to share some thoughts, and I've been reflecting a lot over the last month, and what would my parting words be? And thinking of all the things that we've accomplished over the four years, I don't want to keep us here until the wee hours of the morning, because it's been so much. So to even list what we've accomplished is, it's truly amazing. But this week, someone described me as the most non-political elected official they'd ever met. I laughed, but it's true. I've been thinking about it, but maybe that's how it should be, at least on some level. I can't tell you how many times I've heard people say, "Sandusky's not ready for that. That business will never work in Sandusky. That only works in bigger cities." This is where they're wrong. I don't want to hear the word no. I don't want to hear that it's not possible. Not knowing the ins and outs of politics basically meant that I wasn't jaded by tradition or policy. I came in looking at this position as a business. Policy can be changed and traditions can be broken. The success of a city rides a fine line between running a business and having to take care of your family. There are hard decisions to make, but the end goal is to be successful and happy. Sandusky still has so much potential, and I'm so proud of what we've accomplished in such a short timeframe. Adopting a bicentennial vision plan, supporting longstanding small businesses in our community, and all the while attracting new investors to the area are just a few of the highlights. Our successes gives others the courage to take a chance. And taking a chance on Sandusky is what I did seven years ago, and I couldn't be happier. We should all be proud of the strides that we've made through the years. Sandusky has gained national attention because of the decisions made by this Commission and the leadership of our outstanding City Manager. This not only strengthens our relationships with our stakeholders, it encourages others to have confidence, to believe in Sandusky and what Sandusky can do for them. I want to thank the Commissioners that stood by my side throughout my term. I know I can be quite passionate at times, and I know that that probably creates some anxiety, but I do appreciate it. I want to thank the city staff for all you do. I know it can be a thankless job at times, but I want you to always remember that there is a silent majority out there that are ecstatic what is happening in this community. Keep up the good work. To our new Commissioners, my advice to you, ask a lot of questions, share your thoughts and ideas, and don't back down. And one of you are going to have to learn the consent agenda, because I don't know that they want to take that on. And we still have more work to do. And I say "we" because my work is not done. I'll just be wearing a different hat, and I'll continue to support the progression of Sandusky, and I will be here to support you all in doing the same. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
Figured I'd say at least something. One of the things I'd like to do is I'd like to thank Mr. Wobser, working with him. It's been an interesting experience, you know, and Mr. Lasco and all of the staff and all the Commissioners. You know, when you come into politics, you better come in here, I say, with something really, truly in your heart, because if you don't have that, then you have nothing when you're gone. And I said I learned a lot from the fellow Commissioners here. There's each element. It's almost like you, you know, the Wizard of Oz. When you go through, you've got the Scarecrow, the Tin Man, and each one of them wants something. And so you pick up pieces of that as you go along from everybody in the staff. And so I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for the time here. I see, you know, coming into the future, I still see a few things out there that I'd like to see worked on, you know, public safety, making sure that we shore up our public safety, because I believe that we should protect those that protect us, building a new fire station or getting renovations out on the West End, infrastructure, making sure that we have good drivable roads. I know we have a good plan ahead for that, but making sure that the neighborhoods are drivable as well, which, those things we're working on. Small business, absolutely. You know, attracting and maintaining small business here is one of the cornerstones of things that we should do. One of the first things I did when I came into office, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, I think that's what Kelly Cresser called me, was to look at a business over on Hancock Imagine Bakery, and, you know, being first rebuffed, you know, because of prior times and experiences that businesses have had, which have come to change in light of the new administration, that we're a little bit more welcoming to small business and folks. But having the assistance of Mr. Wobser, Mr. Lasco, we were able to turn around a small business in that neighborhood and make significant improvements to where they made, I think they've doubled down to around $400,000 in investment, which is a tremendous win for everybody. I see investment, investment in a few different ways. You have growth investments from developers that we hope to attract, and those are long-term, and we hope that they can maintain ups and downs. Then we have the shareholders, the people of the city that are involved, that we hope to keep them here to grow our city ultimately. And then we have defensive investments that I hope to see, like these bond projects